Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
I think we have a motion by Dan, seconded by Mari, to approve the minutes as presented from the November twenty-sixth school board meeting. Any discussion or comments?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Have before us an agenda?
Are there no changes to this green agenda? I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Julie, seconded by Mari, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion, changes, or considerations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to celebrations and school community reports, we have Mr. Matt Mahoney here to talk about our fall activities review and give us a winter preview.
All right. Well, good evening. So I gave you guys a packet, and there's kind of four pages on this packet. If you look at the first one, this is our twenty twenty-four fall activity participation. I kind of, I was looking at it a little bit this morning, and I realized that we were about fifteen students below from where we were in two thousand twenty-three. On the backside, if you go to the winter one, we're actually like twenty-two students above of where we were at from a year ago. So in hindsight, we're still probably up from, from a year ago. So overall, I feel pretty good on our numbers. There's one other document in there that has our fine, our fall fine arts participation.
Well, I will just make an observation. The number of fall activities for having fifteen lesser students, when you compare fall to winter, we got a lot more activities on winter as well, so.
Yep. And that's, and I think there's a percentage too down there on the fall where it's, we're at about forty-nine percent of our student, students are out for a fall activity, which is unbelievable. And I think part of that, I think the big reason for that is you have activities like soccer and football where they, they can put eleven out on the field at, at a time, where like in basketball, you can only put five people out at a time. So that helps, cross-country has helped, tennis has helped, so.
But I don't see basketball changing anyway.
No, no, no. Actually, if you go into the basketball numbers, like our boys, for example, we have a lot of kids out for boys' basketball. I think we have twenty, was it twenty-seven, twenty-eight, seventh grade boys. And so they, they got a challenge there to get them all in the game, but it's, they're working on it. So, and then some of the speech numbers, math league knowledgeable, that is not all finalized because technically our speech hasn't fully truly begun yet. So we'll get that updated once, sometime in January. If you go to the fall summary, kind of this document right here, this has kind of got all of our highlights. The top part kind of has a little bit of everything on each team. Football team had a great year, lost in the quarterfinals to Dassel Cato. Our boys soccer was three-ten and three, we lost in the first round. Really kind of a unique year. We had a lot of young kids. Again, if you look at their numbers, their seventh grade numbers are really big. So I think it was just kind of a, a growing year for them. Our girls soccer team had a great year, fourteen-five and one, lost in the section finals to Pine Island. Volleyball, kind of have a tough, tough year. They were four and twenty-two. Girls tennis, ten wins, seven losses. One thing I'll say about that, they had a lot of like four-to-three matches that they lost that could have gone anyway. So they had, they really had a good year. It just, it just didn't show that on, on paper. Boys and girls cross-country, our boys were really, they really got improved as the year went on. I think we got some young girls that are going to make some, some good movement here as they get older. Macy had a phenomenal year, finished the, in the class double-A meet, third place overall. In our debate mock trial, it's really growing, it's really taking off. Debate was just up at state speech, our state debate, was it Friday, Saturday? I talked to Eric a little bit on Monday, and he was explaining it to me, but it's kind of still over my head on how they operate, but sounds like they did a really good job, and they were really close, but they got to one, one item that they were debating, and they just, it was like, they never saw that before. Were you, were you there, Elena?
No.
No. Yeah, yeah. So they did, they, they really did do a good job. Some of our highlights, again, football team, they were in the silver academics. Oliver Torson was academic all-state. I just gave him his plaque today. It's kind of a neat honor. Hank Arts and Elijah Johnson, they are probably on their way right now up to the cities. They're going to play in the All-Star game, so they'll practice tomorrow. They'll play in the All-Star game on, on Saturday. It's kind of cool. Hank is going to play center. He's never played center ever, and I was part of the, I was part of the, the selection of the team, and prior to the selection, I was like, Hank, you need to play center. You should play center. You should play center at, at the college level because it will extend your career because he's had really bad shoulders, and you're kind of joking a little bit about it. And then prior to the selection, I was talking to Todd Oy from Laverne, and I'm like, God, he, he could play center in this, but I'm not going to say it unless somebody brings it up. Sure enough, the coach from Rochester Lord's brings it up, and I'm like, yep, he can play center. So we ended up putting him in the game at, for center. So kind of a cool deal. And then Elijah Johnson is, was selected all-state by the Minnesota Vikings. It's kind of a unique thing, too. We've only had, I was just looking up in the hallway on this, Brady Jensen was all-state in two thousand fifteen, Mike Wubena was all-state maybe two thousand and five, and that's it. So we've had three, three kids in the last however many years that have been selected all-state. So kind of a cool, cool honor. Grease was, was an unbelievable performance. I'm sure a lot of you went there. You guys were in it. It was a really, really well-done production. They really knocked it out of the park. They had a few staff members jump in there as well. I heard they really did a good job, too. So soccer field, soccer association is renaming the field, Matt Nielsen Field. Matt has been the head coach now. I want to say just finished year nineteen, so he's coming up on year twenty. He's been the only head coach in girls soccer program history, and just does an unbelievable job. So he, he, he really deserves that. We had a new agreement for wrestling. We added Truman into our co-op. This is just a really good, really good thing to, to add then on. It doesn't hurt us. It doesn't bump us up a class. Gives us a few extra kids. One new thing with the Minnesota State High School League is they are now bringing on ninth grade as a governance. So right now, all they govern is ten through twelve, and so now they're going to bring in ninth grade, which isn't really a, a huge change for us. It's going to be more of a change for some of the bigger schools, but probably the biggest change that, that we're going to see is now kids aren't going to be able to, like if they're in the seventh and eighth grade, they can't move up and play in the ninth grade. Or if they can, they can't go backwards and play on, on the ninth grade, or they can't go back down and, and play on the eighth grade. I think we had a couple of kids that were, we have some eighth grade basketball kids that, that moved up for ninth grade, and then they went and played on a tournament with the eighth graders this weekend, which they can do that, but in the future years, they can't do that. So it's kind of a unique thing. This probably should have been done a long time ago. So.
We, from an eligibility and qualification standpoint, we treat them like they were governed by a.
Correct. Yes. So really no change on our end. Correct. Yep, yep, yep. Any other questions on that? Andy, anything you want to add, or?
Nope.
We did have our Hall of Fame on September twelfth. That was a really good deal. We brought in new nine members. Just a, a great program. Jonas and his production team did an outstanding job. They did the videos on it, and it was, it was really well-done. Under the upcoming projects, some things that are kind of coming down the, the pipe here a little bit, I, I had a Zoom call today with the Minnesota Vikings about flight, girls seven-on-seven flag football. This was an Olympic sport this year, and it's really starting to take off. And when I was talking to the, the Vikings, they, they said that their whole, their plan is by two thousand twenty-eight that this is, becomes a Minnesota State High School League-sponsored event. So right now, I think there's maybe eight current schools that are doing flag football. A lot of them are the southeast, but it's, the, the wave is starting to come. So we're, so I've talked to Andy a little bit about it. I'm going to talk to our football association a little bit about it and see what we can do to, to bring this to Fairmont. So, and this would be in the, in the springtime, and it would be kind of under the club umbrella for right now, meaning that if Elena Hafner was out for track and field and wanted to participate in it, she could still do that because it's still under the club umbrella. One thing I've been kind of working on here is this activities handbook. I'm not going to go through it, but there's a lot of stuff on here. A lot of the stuff in here originally was like from Tom Mahoney back in the late eighties and Jim Simms or stuff, and a lot of just outdated things. So I'm going to work with Andy a little bit on this and probably bring it to your attention at some point here, but this is still kind of the rough draft of it. Nothing really big in the Big South Conference or the region, two A. Started working on schedules for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. We're going to, we're going to meet on Monday for the, for the triple-A, so that will come out probably early next week. We have a small committee that will put that together. And kind of the current hurdles right now, just lower-level officials. It's just, it's hard to find them, and then we're, we're doing a lot of these double headers, and then you need a couple more, but we're making it work. The bus driver shortage hasn't been horrible. One thing that we have done is we've, we've done a lot of our junior high bussing after four o'clock, and that solves a lot of problems, but so far, it's been pretty good this year. So any questions for me?
Have you received any inquiries or anybody talking about a few of the other sports that are kind of burgeoning? You mentioned flag football for the girls, seeing very big numbers of wrestler, wrestlers for girls, and I see this here also as the first that we have boys volleyball in the state. Is anybody asking about those, inquiring about those?
I want to say we have maybe three or four wrestler, girl wrestlers that are now participating, but again, that's a sport that's really starting to grow fast. I know there's some other schools in our conference that have a lot more numbers. Boys volleyball, I haven't heard hardly anything. Haven't had anybody come talk to me. As far as I know, anybody in our conference doesn't have a team. Nobody in our region has a team, and I think that'll be the next hurdle is, once somebody does have something, how far are they going to have to travel to play somebody? I, I want to say that Martin Luther, they registered for that when, when, when we do that in, in August, they actually registered for boys volleyball. Now, that doesn't mean that they are going to play boys volleyball, but if they had the numbers and they wanted to do that, they could do that yet this spring. So, but as far as us, just haven't had a whole lot of inquiries about it. So, and once we do, and, and we have some people that want to kind of take it by the, by the horns and run with it, we'll, we'll look into it. So.
Yeah. Well, if, if we get enough interest in girls wrestling, I'd be interested in seeing us hire a girls wrestling coach specifically for girls team if we had enough.
Yep.
The participants.
Yep. And I think that is kind of the, what some of the other schools are doing. So.
So if you would have boys volleyball, what season does that play?
In the springtime.
In the spring. I mean, because we do girls volleyball in the fall.
Yep, yep.
And, you know, and so it does kind of get to that point where, you know, we, we are fortunate to have a larger school.
Yep.
But what that can happen is it takes participants from other sports as well.
Correct, correct. And there's, and, you know, we could have gone back twenty years and said the same thing when, when they brought in girls soccer and boys hockey, that.
Been there.
Exactly. You have been there, yes. And it, and it hasn't really hurt us. You know, I think there's a handful of boys right now that are, that are not doing anything in the.
No, but like I said, we are a larger school district.
Correct, correct.
I mean, we are not a large school, but we are one of the larger in our area.
Correct.
So that, that is what we are fortunate to have, but our neighboring school districts do not have that much. And there you go. Now, you talked last was the bus driver shortage, and we talked about officials.
Yep.
You know?
Yep.
Those, so if we, going forward, are going to be thinking about that, those are things that we have to have on the board as well.
Absolutely. Yep. And one of the talks was, well, let's have boys volleyball in the, in the fall, and then they would be sharing a gym and then sharing the officials. But it's, it's kind of no different. A lot of the, the volleyball officials that we get it to come in are also our baseball softball officials.
Sure.
So we're going to be playing both sides of it. So.
This says there's only nine people in speech that can.
Before you got here, it's not updated.
Yes, they disgusted.
Correct.
I knew you were talking, and I wanted to miss it.
Yeah.
You also can't drive as fast on slippery roads.
That's right.
You shouldn't drive as fast anyway.
How many did you hit, Mike?
I was driving normal, just much, much more carefully.
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt. I would just add, if there is anyone listening that is interested in officiating, even at the junior high level, please contact our activities office at the junior senior high school because we can always use more options to, for Matt and Jane to reach out to, to schedule for officiating, really any of our sports, from wrestling to boys and girls basketball, hockey, gymnastics, officials, you name it. If you know anyone, or if you yourself are interested, please reach out to our activities office.
And we pay pretty good, so.
Well, I was at the basketball games on Saturday, and I was really impressed with, you know, and that's one thing where I know some people, some people got out of officiating was because of the parent, you know?
Yeah.
But I have to say, I was really impressed with, number one, the officials. I was impressed with how the students took, you know, the officiating and stuff, the coaches, the parents. I mean, we've come a long way. I'm not saying that.
Because we're not perfect.
No, but if anybody has any ideas or anything, but come out and just participate, or even just watch one of these games and see, because those things, those things that happened made headlines.
Yeah. I think one thing, too, that you guys kind of both bring up a good point, and I want to say maybe Bluer started it. I think they did it like an, like an officiating course where they had some of their senior guys offer it to their community, and then they ended up getting maybe two or three senior boys that decided not to go out for basketball, or ended up, going to end up doing some of their junior high stuff.
Wonderful.
So, and we've had young kids do that, too. I know Garrett did some baseball softball stuff for us. So, all right.
Thanks, Matt.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, we have one more report from Mr. Tyler Garrison, our building and grounds director.
I'll try to cut mine shorter than that. Just kidding.
They won't ask any questions.
I got to give Matt grief. So I handed out a little sheet here that has radon results, and it also has lead and water results on the backside, but we'll go over radon results first. It's required by the state that we give the board the results, and then we also will be turning these into the state. I did not bring the forty-two-page document, but if anybody wants it, email me, and I can send it off to you. I just did an overview. The action level is four-point-oh for pickle curries per liter or greater. That's when we have to do something with our, our kits or test results. I'm happy to report that with a hundred and twelve radon kits here at the elementary and a hundred and eight at the high school, they are all in, there's four different levels. We're in the lowest level on all of the results in the zero-point-zero to one-point-nine. We did have one at the high school that was at a two-point-zero to two-point-nine, which is also very low. We did have one at the high school that was at a 2.0 to 2.9, which is also very low. So, um, we are below the action level, which is good. 25 duplicate kits replaced in the district. These are put in place so that we're making sure we're getting accurate readings in, in different areas of the building. 11 blanks are sent in from these detectors. That just verifies that nothing is wrong with these if they're not, they're not contaminated from the factory or storage or anything like that. So those all came back good. And then they also send in three spike detectors to verify that their equipment when they're measuring, uh, the, in the lab that they are accurate. So very good test results. Um, so we have, we are required by law to do this five, every five years and, um, we are, we are authorized or we are given the task of letting the board know and also the public. So it'll be on the school website as well. Any questions on radon? If you turn your page to the back is lead and water overview of results. Uh, we did 100 samples between the two buildings, 46 at elementary, 54 at the high school. In the past years, it's been 20 parts per billion you had to be under. Now they've changed it, starting July to five parts per billion. So it's, they're getting stricter on their numbers. Um, we had 11 samples that were above the five parts per billion. A lot of those, five of the 11 were actually, uh, faucets that weren't even being used in the district. We ended up taking them out of commission and the other six were lower numbers than the 20, but, uh, we have to put signage there that it's non-podable water. Um, we did very well with that whole, um, sample as well. Any questions on that? That is also a five-year requirement, so we do that every five years. And then to end things off, we did get a surprise visit from OSHA on last Wednesday. Um, they do that quite often in districts, so do a surprise visit. Um, we did very well, I thought. We will not get our citations till January. I did a closing with the inspector this morning and, um, I can say that we'll be close to probably three citations. Now I would, I don't know what the amount will be for those citations, but, um, comparing the other districts, it's very good. It's a very low number. It helped having Sue Lebo. I called her in from IEA who we have as a rep. Um, a lot of things were covered through her and myself and, uh, I'm learning a lot about OSHA and, uh, it was a very good experience. The gentleman we had in was very nice. Um, I've heard other talks in other districts where it's not so nice, but this gentleman was very good. Very beneficial to us. There's, I've got 20 some items that were not citations, but this things he pointed out that we can work on and, and do better and get, um, so it was a good visit overall. So I will not get, I'll get a green card, they call it, in January and then that's when we'll have to address the citations and get them, and get them repaired. Um, but I already kind of know what they are, so I'm working on it, so. Any questions on OSHA?
I just want to comment too, like the, the gentleman that came to do the OSHA inspection came into the district office that morning. Um, Sarah contacted Tyler and he was over, um, in a matter of time. And so it's legitimately an unplanned, on, so Tyler had to drop every, he has to drop everything he's doing that day to attend to that and go, you know, throughout the district. And they spent literally the full day with no breaks.
Eight hours and a guy like me likes to eat lunch, didn't even get lunch.
So that, that's not a, um, I guess, what would you call it? Uh, we did not direct Tyler to work through eight straight hours, um, but he, uh, he chose to do that. So in, in respect for the gentleman that was here for OSHA too, they collectively made that decision, so he didn't have to come back the next day. And, um, thanks for, again, Tyler dropping what you did. I know it's part of your job, but, um, that customer service to people that come into our district as well is important to us, so thanks for your work on that.
And do they come every year or is it?
So the last time they were in a district was 2012.
Oh, wow.
But they can come, it's up to them, they can come anytime. It could be three years from now, could be next year, could be, um, but talking to Sue Lebo, school districts, their staff hasn't been real good as far as they're too thin to get to a lot of districts, but now they're ramping up to get into districts more, so.
I would imagine people with more citations probably get checked on.
You do and they follow up more, you know, in our experience that we've done, you know, at one time they used to let you know when they'd be coming, so you could prepare for it. Well, then you, guess what? They didn't find the citations, they didn't find those things. And so now with the, you know, having the surprise visits, you know, but then you see how good everything's working, you know, because we're doing it all the time. You're not, you know.
Right. And what I found out with the citation process, when they, when they set the fees for that, um, we did a, in our talks this morning, you know, Sue Lebo and myself giving them all our programs, our safety programs we do and all that, that has a factor in what they charge you as well. There's a, a chart they go by. So he said everything was great with that, so hopefully it won't be too bad, so.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thank you.
All right, um, we will move on to our superintendent's report and calendar.
Thanks, Nicole. Just a few things to highlight, um, starting with the enrollment. From a month ago, we are down a few students. However, compared to last year, we are 40 students greater than we were this time a year ago. So still generally trending in the positive with our enrollment, which is definitely a great thing for our district. Tyler gave some, the buildings and grounds updates, um, facilities assessment process with ICS. Tyler and I met with them just earlier this afternoon. Um, we, uh, looked at some rough outlines and potential costs associated with some of the ideas that were generated. Our meeting in October, um, for both present and potential future needs of the district. And then a more detailed discussion will be held in early January at an upcoming operations committee meeting. So those reps will return in January from ICS to have a committee meeting update and to look at, um, some different, uh, things that they've put together from the feedback that you gave as board members back in October. Family, staff and student surveys. At the end of last week, we, on behalf of the district, we sent out our stakeholder desired daily experience surveys. In 2023, as part of our strategic planning process, uh, family representatives, parents, um, staff and students, uh, put together ideas of what they would like their daily experiences to be like, um, for themselves as parents, as staff members and as students. So this is a follow-up to that. Um, and this is a survey that we've put out. This one will be used to gather baseline data and then we will do it annually to give all of our stakeholders there an opportunity to provide feedback on how we're doing. That is the extent of my report. You know, our next board meeting, uh, won't, as you approved at the last meeting, won't be until January 14th. So that'll be a regular business meeting and then we will look to, uh, potential work session on January 28th to look at that demographic housing and enrollment analysis, um, that we were supposed to do in November. Um, and then one final thing before I, I do conclude my report, um, I think it's important to acknowledge, uh, that tonight will be Julie's last, uh, school board meeting as a member of the Fairmont Area Schools School Board. Uh, she's, uh, been an integral part of our school board for 23 years. Um, has served, uh, in overseeing the works of the district, three different superintendents during that time. Um, and if my math is generally correct, approximately 483 school board meetings.
Wow.
Over that time and if you take.
Boy, if I'd have looked at that before, maybe I wouldn't have stayed on so long.
Yeah, and if you average approximately an hour per school board meeting, some a little shorter, some a little longer, um, and then you divide that number by 24, so total days, that would be about 20 total days of your life that you've dedicated to service of Fairmont Area Schools.
That's not counting committee meetings.
That's not counting committee meetings. So definitely more than that, but you know, uh, as, I've been able to, to serve alongside you Julie as a teacher when I first came to the district in 2007, um, as an administrator in different roles and, and now a superintendent and, uh, I've appreciated your ongoing advocacy, um, your, your willingness to, to share your thoughts on behalf of the school district, um, specifically in a transition of consolidation over the years to make sure the, where you live in Ceylon has a voice on the board. Um, and then your, your ability, at least in our conversations to where we've been able to disagree respectfully, um, and still be able to continue the business of the school board. That, that's an art, that's something that you learn. Um, it's something that's appreciated because through, through questioning and inquiry, that's how we get better and that's something that, that you've done from my perspective as superintendent in the last four years now, um, a very, very good job of. And, uh, you are, you're leaving a void, um, obviously a lot of experience. I will not delete your phone number from my, from my cell phone, um, and will still rely on you to, to share information as you get questions and different things as, um, you won't formally be on the school board, but I know, um, you won't be a stranger to our activities, um, and being an advocate for kids, um, and what's best for our communities of our school district. You've exemplified that in your 23 years and, um, wish you all the best as you, as you exit the board and enjoy the last few moments of your, your final school board meeting here. Is there anything you'd like to, to share in, in partying tonight?
Yes, um, yeah, cause you know, we got to get it to this truth and taxation meeting and get that up on the board here as well. But I do, um, I've said this quote once, I know I've said it, once I've said it maybe a dozen different times, but being on the school board has been a tough job, but it's been a tough job that I've loved. Borrowing from the Marines, I believe it's the toughest job that you'll ever love. And that's what I find is that it was. I feel that when I was in the school board, thank you so much, Andy, for what, your kind words that you said and, um, but it's always been the focus of our students. I will tell you that when I told my kids when I signed up to, uh, run for the school board, my son was very upset because the school district had just passed the no open lunch. And so as his thinking was, I had crossed to the other side. Now as a parent, he came to me just, just last couple of months and with concerns of stuff of his children in the school district. And you know, um, I mean, you can see the difference in that and it, it does, it's a varying of the students versus an adult, but you know, it's, it is, it's the things that you learn. And yes, there's lots of years that, um, I learned things, yes. You learn from what happened, you know what went wrong, what happened, but you know, I started even just as a community member on the Ceylon School Board. I didn't serve on the Ceylon School Board, I just was a community member. We looked at, at the time Ceylon closed the district, we looked at what was best for our students and we found that combining with Fairmont, even with open enrollment, bringing those students here to Fairmont, it wasn't just for the Ceylon kids. It was what was best for all the Fairmont kids as well. And so our students, our kids, my kids came into Fairmont schools and had a great education. Yep, they had to work a little bit sometimes to get, um, to where they are now. Um, now they have their own kids. Um, I have kids in the Mankato School District, I have kids in the New Alm School District and two families here in the Fairmont School District. And yes, I'll, I'll still be at the activities. You might even see me here at a meeting. Um, maybe I will remember to turn it on, on Tuesday nights and watch the, um, meetings as well. Um, but it is, it is the toughest job that you'll ever love and anybody who, you know, has a love for the kids, it's what I've done it and that's why I've done it, is for the kids. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Julie. I should have asked you this beforehand, but do you have a, a memory or something you're most proud of, uh, for, of doing as a school board member?
Boy, I don't know if there's just one thing. Um, um, what I do remember, what I really liked doing one year was, um, speaking at my own kids' graduations. And then when they came to get their diploma, to have that ability to just reach out to them, hug them and give them that diploma that they'd worked so hard. And I knew how much they had worked for those diplomas, but it was just really special for them and for me to just be there and to have that. And for my grandchildren, the ones that have been, um, that I've given the diplomas as well. It is, it is just really, that's one of the things that, um, I do remember as being one of the special things.
Thank you, Julie. You are a wealth of knowledge and I'm sure when we have questions, we'll, like Annie said, still give you a call. So thank you very much.
I'll still answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Um, moving on as we must, we are going to look at financial business, which.
Um, Dr. Miller was the superintendent, um, who I discussed, uh, running the board when I ran and, um, that was one of the first tasks that we had was to hire Butch Hanson. Uh, one of the community members, um, I won't say his name, I don't think he'd care, but, um, told me one day in the store that I was shopping and he said, "Do not go, you know, don't choose Butch as because he's just here." And so anything I ever did in the school district, I didn't, didn't choose it just because that should be the, the, the choice, that, the expected choice. I would think at it and honestly, when we hired Butch, I really felt, af- after he had served as our superintendent, I thought we did make the right choice, but he really, at that, um, interview session, he really showed up, um, what he could really do for our district, so. But yeah, that was my first real big job on the school district was hiring Butch Hanson as a superintendent. And Butch had been the, um, business manager prior to that.
So that's four superintendents, four super.
Yeah, I misspoke then. If you had six months with Dr. Miller.
Yeah, yeah.
So it would have been four.
I would think so, yeah, you're right. Yeah, so.
So my apologies.
No, that's all right.
I didn't mean to short you.
Well, I didn't even remember it, so there you go. It is, it is, like I said, toughest job you'll ever love.
Thank you, Julie. Well, you ready to give your last financial report?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we have to let Dan do his.
Yeah, I've got one, I've got a couple of very nice donations I'd like to mention as provided for Minnesota statutes, that the Fairmont Area School Board of Education gratefully accepts, uh, the following donations or grants. First from Dan's appliance in the amount of $15,000, a donation for activities projects. Uh, this is another, uh, upgrade to scoreboards at the softball fields. Uh, and then we have, uh, from the Mike and Jenny Palmela, charitable fund of the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation, $100 for any general support. I move that we gratefully accept those donations and grants.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Thank you. A motion by Dan, second by Mari. Any discussion or comments? Okay. Uh, we'll call, we'll go for a roll call vote. Jen? Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mari?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries and thank you again to all, all for their generous donations and consideration of our schools. Julie?
Okay. So now that I lost my green sheet, and I know you guys did this on purpose, the green sheet, because you know how much I love having a green agenda. So anyway, um, you'll have first of transfers and wire, um, wires for the month of November to December 4th. Nothing that I know of that is, um, unusual on that. That's just basic, um, financial business. And then is the, um, detailed, I have a copy of the detailed, uh, register of checks. And, um, as looking through there, there wasn't anything unusual on there that I would like to bring to anybody's attention. If anybody has any questions, I could probably, um, give you some information on there because I do have the detailed copy. If not, then I will make a motion to approve the wire transfers for November 21st, 2024 to December 4th, 2024, and the December 10th, 2024 bills.
Go second it. Thank you. We have a motion by Julie, second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we will move on to new business employment. Jen?
We've got a couple of new employments. Um, so I'll make a motion to approve Nicole Johnson, Elementary Administrative Support Assistant, step 10, effective January 6th, 2025, and Gabriella Ramos. Elementary. And Gabriella Remos, Elementary Paraprofessional, Step 1, effective January 6th, 2025.
Thank you, we have a motion by Jen, second by Mike to accept the preceding recommendations for employment. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Resignations, Mike?
We have two resignations we've been asked to accept. I make a motion to accept the resignation of the following individuals. Ashley Gilb, a elementary paraprofessional with an effective date of 12, 13, 2024. And Catalina Cardova, a high school paraprofessional with an effective date of December 20th, 2024.
I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a motion by Mike, second by Mari to approve the resignations. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And we will move on to board committee reports, SDCC. We went over the, and are going to continue to go over the numbers that were discussed in our last board meeting with the world's best workforce, test scores, et cetera. And there's action plans that are coming together. And that meeting is once a month and it's for an hour and a half. And there's quite a lot of good discussion and planning that takes place there and it continues. All right, any questions for me?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion as second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now we need a motion to open the public truth and taxation hearing. Julie?
I'll second it.
Okay. Dan makes a motion, Julie seconds, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you, motion carries. Meeting is in session. And we have here to discuss this. Can you introduce yourself to us? Thank you.
Do you have my presentation that we can put up on the screen?
Yep, I'll pull it over and we'll get set up here.
Well, good evening, I'm Beth Downs. I am one of the municipal advisors on your team from Ellers along with Shelby McQuaid. So, we're filling in tonight while your Jessica, I believe, is out enjoying her, enjoying her time right now. So, I get to do her lovely truth and taxation presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Jessica was known for doing it very quickly.
Um, is this on?
I don't think she heard you.
Yes.
Jessica was known for being very like efficient and fast.
I will say, I can, I can talk extremely quickly. However, this presentation is very thorough and so I have a lot of information, but we're going to do it quick. Because I understand that you liked the way Jessica did it.
Who doesn't like, like the, you know, data presentation?
Some people really do like that, all the numbers.
No, I'll take this one.
Yeah.
These are not the numbers.
If it reaches.
It's caught under the wielder.
If you had people from the public in, you'd have to go through.
Dan, you're the, you're going to be the resident historian on the board.
I don't feel that old.
Are you 16 years in? Or 20?
2009.
I was 15, okay.
So, yeah, it'll be 16 years next year.
I was in Truman.
Very.
I was playing basketball, I was like, I got plenty of time to get back.
Yeah, I didn't know it was snowing. And it was sticking on the roads.
Looking good.
Good. All right, thank you. So, we're going to, again, my name's Beth Downs, one of your municipal advisors at Ellers. So, Minnesota state law requires we have a truth and taxation hearing tonight. We've got to talk about the budget and the tax levy and we've got to start after 6 o'clock. So, we are doing great. Our agenda for tonight, we're going to provide some background information on school funding. We'll talk about the budget a little bit for fiscal year '25, look at the taxes payable for '25, and then finally allow for any public comments. So, basically, school districts are very highly regulated in what you can do with your money and where you get your money from and how you spend it. And your tax levy is no different when it comes to that. So, the state sets your formulas for your revenues, the tax policies that you have, the maximum authority you can use for your levies. Really, the only thing you have control over is some of those board-approved authorities you have for some capital items. And then if you go to the voters for any additional funds. But otherwise, you're pretty, pretty set on what you can do with your levy and your revenues. Just a quick reminder, because this is always something fun to point out for school finance. So, this is our general education formula allowance graph. So, what this graph is showing is from, if we take a level look in 2003 of about $4,966 in general education per pupil aid. And we roll that forward on the blue line is the inflation. So, if the state had kept pace with inflation and paid you that per pupil amount, we'd be up to $8,645 per pupil. So, essentially, to, to provide that same kind of programming and funding we back, we had back in 2003, we'd have to be up over $8,600. You can see that orange dotted line is what the state's actually done, so right around $7,200. So, we're about $1,300 short of 2003 if you were sticking with inflation. So, it's really interesting when you hear the historic funding that we've had from the past couple of years, that, excuse me, that 4% and 2% on that general education aid formula. You know, it sounds so great, but it didn't even keep pace with inflation for us after the pandemic. We've seen huge inflation, right? So, just something to be aware of and, and it's a, it's a good reminder for our public too that we are not properly funded. Same thing with special education aid. The state did make some gains towards this in their last legislative session. So, we're seeing more funding for special education aid, but it is still not enough to cover that additional cost of providing those services to your students. So, in 2023, overall statewide, there's like a $726 million shortfall. When we get into 2027, as they forecast forward, we're still going to be at a $455 million shortfall. So, it's just really, it's not, it's not keeping pace, it's better. They've done a better job lately, but it's still not enough to really be funding our schools. So, some budget information for the 2025 school year. So, we'll talk about it a little bit, but the way the levy cycle goes, it does not correlate with the fiscal year that you're in. So, tonight when you are approving your levy for pay '25, it's actually revenue for fiscal year '26. So, instead of, and obviously, we don't have a budget for '26, right? It's pretty far ways out, but we do have one for 2025. So, we'll look at all the districts' funds, general, food service, community service, building construction, debt service, and your trust fund. So, this is your district revenue and expenditures, and this is actually your MDE budget publication that you're required to do every year. So, all the red amounts there are actuals for 2024. So, you'll see beginning fund balances back in '24, about 10.7 million, up to 12.1 at the end of 2024. And then your budget for '25 is basically break even, a little under 32 million in revenues, a little over in expenditures. And then projected fund balance of just under 12 million at the end of June, 2025. So, this is just a quick demonstration, this is your revenue for all the funds, so that around 32 million. You can see it's pretty obvious, the general fund makes up the vast majority of your operations. So, all of that education and programming is all going through that general fund. We've got small amounts going through food service, community service, your debt service fund, and then a really small amount for your trust. And if we break it down just to the general fund, which is your basic operations, about 78% of your revenue is coming from state aid. And a vast majority of that is that general education aid that we talked about earlier, right? That amount per pupil that you get. So, a vast majority of the state aid is actually that general education aid. And so, that per pupil formula allowance we talked about being behind is a really big deal for schools because you get so much of your revenue from that. You've got a little bit of federal, you probably had a bump in this in the last couple of years with the funding that came through during the pandemic and is now falling off. Your local represents those tax levies and anything as far as fees, extracurricular or otherwise, your interest revenue falls in there, kind of those miscellaneous amounts. On the expenditure side, you're just under, or just over 27 million in expenditures for the general fund for this fiscal year we're in. This is a pretty common story for most districts. You're going to see really heavy salary and wages and employee benefits making up your expenditures because we're in the people, business, and school. This is a vast majority of what we've got going on. You've got a fairly high purchase services because you've got transportation contracting that comes through that section, supplies and materials are those consumables every year, capital items are the, the expenses that are gone over a couple more. They have a longer useful life, I'll say. And then just some other miscellaneous expenses as well. But again, vast majority salary and benefits for your general fund. And this is a breakdown of the expenditures by program. So, you'll see that green pie slice, the purple and the blue, that is all direct instruction. So, you've got regular instruction, vocational ed, and special instruction there. Or I think it's around like 62% total. And then when you add in the instructional support and pupil support, you're up at about 77% of your expenditures, expenditures going right towards students. The other items that come through there, your sites and buildings, your utilities and insurance are coming through, through that program. And then you've just got a small amount under 10% that's for your district support services and your administration. So, more of that operational side of the district. Vast majority of your expenditures are going to the classroom. So, to the levy for tonight, so a change in the taxes does not determine a change in budget. So, just because you are seeing an increase in the tax levy for the district doesn't necessarily mean that the school district is getting any more money in total. There might be shifting from state over to the levy portion and vice versa. There's a lot of different factors that go into your levy and it's not like a city and a county where it just straight up increases for them if the levy goes up. So, school districts versus a city, county. Your budget starts in July, goes through June. Your levy calendar, it's calendar, your levy is calendar-based, however. So, the taxes that the people are going to pay based on this levy during calendar year '25 to revenue for fiscal year '26. So, we're looking into the future here. City, county hasn't much easier, they budget for January 1st, they collect their money during 2025, and that's their revenue for 2025. So, nice and simple and easy for them and they generally don't have to ask the voters for much either. This is the sample of a parcel notice that your taxpayers would have received. So, this comes through the county as the administrator essentially. So, you'll pay for your county, your city, your township, your school taxes, and there might be other miscellaneous assessments that are coming through on this. For your taxpayers, it's good to know what the county levies, what the city levies, what the school levies, all completely independent of each other. What one levies does not have a factor on what the other jurisdictions can do. So, just if you are concerned about your taxes going up, it's always a really good idea to look at your valuation, look at what's happening with the county side, then look what's happening with your city and township, and finally, the school district. Because there could be a myriad of things happening that are not directly related to what is going on with your school levy. So, again, we're, we're very regulated here, right? So, we've got state law and voter approval and those are property tax options. And the property tax process, this is just up here really to show there are six, six steps to this process and the school board does one of them, which is approving the levy. Otherwise, between MDE and the county, everything else is outside of your control. So, you're part of the control. So, September 8th, MDE put out the initial levy calculations for us. September 24th, you all approve the proposed levy. Mid-November, the counties mailed out all those truth and taxation statements to all your property tax owners. We're having our public hearing tonight. And then following this, you'll go ahead and approve that final levy for certification. So, overall, 2025 levy is increasing about just under $68,000 or 1%. So, pretty small, you'll see our breakdown here on the left. We've got it broken down between the different funds and then the different categories within the funds. So, you've got general fund items, community service, debt service. And then we also have on the very, those bottom three rows are what your taxpayers see on their statements, which is one that's voter-approved taxes and one that's other. So, your voter-approved would be your operating referendum that comes through and then any building bonds or bonds that were debt-approved. So, some of it is operating and some of it's debt service that way. And then the other category is basically everything else. So, again, about $68,000 for this year, 1%. The major changes that are coming through are, one, in the general fund for your achievement and integration program. So, this program is partially funded through levy and partially through the state. So, it's a 70-30 breakdown. So, this is actually your second year of participation in the program, 2026 will be. 2025 is your first year. And so, last year, and because of the way achievement integration is approved, it's, it didn't, it didn't get approved before your levy last year. So, we've got a catch-up amount and the adjustments for this fiscal year and you've got this new one for next year as well. But you should have seen the achievement and integration budget usually comes through in the spring. I believe you have to approve them. And we've got some prior year adjustments, like I talked about, the achievement integration is coming through there. Also, a lot of your levy is based on enrollment projections and you're really trying to predict the future three year, three years out. And so continually, MDE always is coming back and making adjustments to actual, by the time they get to your actual enrollment, and they actually do it three years in a row. So, it takes a long time to cycle through all those levy adjustments. That's what's going on with this one. And then your debt service fund, we've got a reduction for debt excess. So, what happens for your debt payments is they take the principal and interest amount that you have to pay for the year and multiply that by 105% to make sure if there are any delinquents, that people aren't paying on time, that you still get enough tax revenue to make your principal and interest payments for the year. Over time, those build up, right? Because not, generally, you're not going to get 5% delinquents. Over time, that builds up, you get a fund balance, MDE has a calculation they do. They go and look, and if you've got too much fund balance, then they take some levy away and basically give that back to the taxpayers. So, that's why you'll see some adjustments going on with this. So, we've seen this a lot in current years and it's, a lot of it has to do with the interest revenue that the debt service fund has been making. Typically, we haven't seen a lot of interest revenue coming through, but with interest rates being higher and districts seeing more revenue, we're seeing some of that debt excess adjustments going up too. So, factors impacting the individual taxpayers, like I said, we've got different jurisdictions where, that's going on. And then we've also got the change of value in their individual property versus what's going on in the whole district. So, this is just our quick example, we've got two homes valued at $100,000. Total levies, $500, they're each paying half, $250. The next year, home number one, their value goes up to $110,000. Home number two, their value's up to $125,000. Now, that $500 mix isn't spread evenly. Now, the $125,000 home is going to pay a little bit more than the 110. So, that's essentially is what happened, is what's happening with our valuations. If overall, the district increased to about 3% in their home valuations and your home increased 10, you're going to see a bigger increase in the amount you have to pay potentially compared to your neighbors. So, lots of different things, moving parts going on in there above and beyond just the school district increasing their levy by 1%. Couple other changes came through the homestead credit that people see on their property taxes, that reduction to your estimated market value. The state changed that a little bit and actually gave tax owner, property owners a little bit more relief. And then the egg homestead, they also switched the limit from 3.5 million to 2.15 million. So, what that means is the classification is 1% up to the first 3.5 million and then it jumps up to 1.25. So, they, as you, are you, you're become more property wealthy, they tax you a little bit higher on it. So, we've got a couple of graphs and charts for you that show a four-year school levy comparison. And we've got some amounts just straight across the board. And then we've got some graphs that assume some increases in your valuations over the years. So, this is our, our giant table and it is pretty little up here, but we've got the property classifications on the left, so residential, commercial, egg. The estimated market value, right? So, these are the market values on your tax statements, not what you think your home is going to sell for. Very big difference, right? You'll see when you look at them. Your actual taxes payable in '22, '23, '24, at these different valuation amounts. The estimate for 2025, we actually get your county valuation estimate. So, we're basing this based on what the county is telling us for pay '25. And then those last two columns is your change in taxes over the last four years and then just last year to this year. So, these are a little bit nicer to see in graph form. So, your average value home in your district is about $210,000. So, we've got the graph down the left, example one is a $200,000 residential home. Example two on the right is a $250,000 home. So, this would be if your home was valued at $200,022 and all the way up through '25 or $250, all the four years, there's your changes in the taxes you're paying. So, you'll see the amount of taxes are actually going down for this year, even though your tax rate is increasing, right? And that's because of the valuation, the overall valuation of the district increasing. For our egg properties, that's example three there, so that's an acre valued at $10,000. You're going to be at about $570 for this year. And part of what is going on for your egg property is some of the levy switched from that debt service, right? The debt service part went down because of that debt excess. And then in the general fund, the achievement integration went up. Well, on the debt portion, your egg properties get a 70% credit. Well, on the debt portion, your egg properties get a seventy percent credit. So, the state pays seventy percent of their debt service. So, when we move that levy to just the general fund, they don't get a seventy percent reduction anymore. So, that's why you're seeing your residential, your commercial are going down, but your egg properties are actually seeing a little bit of an increase. And then this next two graphs are actually based on a thirty percent cumulative change in property value. And this is kind of what we've been seeing over the last three years. So, a sixteen percent increase to '23, '24, and then about five percent for this year. So, if you look, what you're looking at for that first example is back in 2022, the home, your home would have been worth about a hundred and fifty-three thousand. And then the valuation increase is up to two hundred thousand for this year. So, overall, between '23, '24, and '25, you're paying almost exactly the same. Even though your house valuation has gone up pretty drastically, the amount that you're paying in taxes has remained really consistent. Um, same kind of story for that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. It's gonna look a little different, right? Because as your valuations, um, go up, you don't get as much of a nice homestead credit exclusion. So, not as nice for them, but still super consistent from '23, '24, '25. Um, other items, state property tax refunds and deferrals. Um, there's a homestead, um, credit refund and then that is based on your income and also the value of your, of your home. Always a good idea, um, to go out there and calculate and try. Property tax refunds are great. Um, there's also a special property tax refund if your taxes have increased over twelve percent, um, from the, from the prior year. And then there also is a senior citizen property tax deferral. And so, that is not a refund, but a deferral. So, eventually, um, when the home is sold or if the homeowner passes away, those taxes will still be due. But it does give a break, um, to those people who are on the restricted income. So, our next steps tonight is the board accepts public comment on the levy and then you will go ahead and certify the 2025 property tax levy.
Thank you. That was a very thorough and...
Well done.
Good presentation.
Yeah, I actually learned a couple of things there, so.
Oh, good, good. And do we have, I don't see anyone here from the public, any comment from anyone who is here? Not, okay. Then, uh...
I'd make a motion to approve the 2024 payable 2025 tax levy in the amount of six million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
Thank you. I'll second. We have a motion by Mike and a second by Jen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I therefore entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, I'd like to point out, I'm surprised Julie didn't do this, but you are, I usually always do this. If your taxes went up, it's highly unlikely anything to do with the school districts. Look at your county and look at your city portion of your tax statement. Because as you've seen from this presentation, one, we don't have a lot of control, but number two, what we're doing is negligible impact, if not lower, for a lot of folks. But I have a strong suspicion that most people have seen a substantial increase in their property taxes. Not necessarily referring to myself, but, uh, it's not because of the school district. And I think it's important that we say that out loud because it's true and, uh, um, we should say that.
But by seeing this, 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 um, presentation though, shows the community in that how important industry and business is to, um, an area. Because then some of that also comes off on that, yes, we have a lot of egg, um, area and there is some rebates with agricultural land that we do have in our, in our district. But just the industry that we have, we don't have the industry today as what we've had in years gone past. But it just shows, um, that importance on that financial, um, what we're missing out on, just not having that industry available to us.
All right, having said that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.